Welcome to community the whole on February 5th. We have one item on the agenda, Community Services Department year end wrap-up. Kelly Beamer is here. Kelly?
Thank you, Council President Prince. Council members, Kelly Beamer, Community Services Administrator. Behind me is our amazing fantastic team for Community Services. So I have quite a bit to share and Jay has assured me that the council meeting is okay to be postponed until 7:30.
That's between you and the mayor.
So, thank you for your time. What I'd like to do is run through again, this is at a really high level of what our team accomplishes through a single year. They have a lot of projects and action items on their agenda and so, without further ado, I will move forward. So this year, one of the major accomplishments that we had undertaken a little over a year ago was looking at how to reorganize the Community Services Department so that it was a little bit more efficient and we had a lot of like businesses that would be reporting a little bit differently. So as you can see here, this is what the original divisions look like. And then through council approval, we did a, we did the reorg and you can see here that we separated out the golf course from parks. We added what we're calling now parks and trails, so we added the farmers market and volunteer program which those two essentially are in our parks and are constantly coordinated with our park staff. We still have parks planning, natural resources, and then we separated out the neighborhoods and event permitting, added into recreation as recreation is a big coordinator and supporter with the events. So, as you can see, approved in December, that is what the new org chart looks like. And then we'll move on to the parks and golf course. We're leaving the original titles the same since that's how they operated through the year, so bear with me on that. So parks maintenance, again, 32 developed parks. You can see the acreage, the number of trails and miles that are maintained, along with all of the city's right-of-way irrigation. The parks team takes care of that as well. And then, all of our park staff are required to have certifications at a minimum. They are all Washington pesticide applicator licensed or certified. And then, there's a variety depending on their responsibility and area of parks where they would either be a certified playground safety inspector or a backflow assembly tester. And then some of our staff are certified parks and recreation professionals. So, year round, sorry, skipped ahead here. Year round, we, the staff mows over 180 acres of turf in one season. Annually, they prep at a minimum 1,200 athletic fields and in coordination with recreation where they provide all the field linings for baseball, soccer, and then also repair and maintenance to the tennis courts, basketball courts, et cetera. And on top of that, support all the citywide events. So they're out at the 4th of July's, the River Days, all of those large events with helping set up and getting the parks ready for the crowds that we see at our events. And then along with some of our certifications, they also do routine safety inspections to all of our playgrounds and our skate park. And then again, looking at our irrigation maintenance, they look through all of our landscape strips in the city's right-ways. In addition to their responsibility, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
In addition to their responsibilities, they also are charged with homeless encampment cleanups and removals. And as you can say, see, this past year, we had 52 camps from 15 different locations, a couple of times, multiple times, obviously, at those locations. Over 250 hours of staff time, including police as well. We definitely want to give a big shout-out to our police department as they partner with us when we're up in the, some of the natural areas and some of the different encampments so they keep all of our teams safe. We also oversee, the Parks Division also oversees the volunteer trail rangers which as you can see are additional eyes and ambassadors out in the trails for us. They do make contact with, not, they don't run over them with the golf cart, but they do make contact on the trails with walkers, joggers, bicyclists, as you can see up here. They give verbal speed warnings to let people know that if they're traveling in excessive speeds and potentially causing some unsafe conditions on our trail. We had 21 members this year on our ambassadors, our trail ambassadors, which is one of the largest amounts we've had, so a lot of people are very interested in keeping our trails safe and being out and talking with our citizens. Some of our accomplishments through the parks then is they installed two new exercise pieces of equipment at Heritage Park. They implemented a community garden, the pea patch down at, next to the shops off of Williams as well as the North Highlands Community Garden. And then also support the May Creek Day of Service as well as green and cleans throughout the city. We also partner with King County, the Eastside Rail Corridor, file marker five along the train tracks as you are all aware of. We also had a Girl Scout do a gold award project where she added different types of exercise equipment apparatus in our dog park. And then we also partnered with Department of Natural Resources to enhance the boardwalk, extend the boardwalk actually through Bird Island, and then install large woody debris along the shorelines to increase habitat areas, which was a big project. Have you been out to Bird Island to see the new boardwalk? It's beautiful, they did a fantastic job out there. And we move on to Maplewood Golf Course. So some of the major milestones that were implemented this year, new text marketing program with over 600, close to, I think we're over 650 members now. It's a very active program, as you know, everyone uses their phones a lot more than they look at printed promotions sometimes, so this is a way to attract business on times that might not normally be programmed or last-minute cancellations and things like that that we can fill those spots. We also did adopt a hole with our club members, meaning that while they're out there, they're making sure they're taking care of filling divots with sand and seed. The non-golfer policy, it's a spectator policy, was established through the golf course and our city attorney's office. We hosted a senior pro-am for the first time since, I think it was 1978, I believe, so that was a hugely popular event where it attracts professional golfers and amateurs from across the state. We had a follow-up and house which council was invited to as well. It gives, talks about all the operations of what the golf course is responsible for as an enterprise fund. And then again, we're the home course for all of the high school, Renton, Hazen, Lindberg, and Liberty. They also relamped the driving range which is typically done about every three years depending on how the lights survive, I guess. We installed a weather station which gives the crew a chance to see what the weather is when we get tons of calls all the time, what is the temperature, all those kind of things, and they can provide that information. And then we also, they can, they, the customers can get on the weather app that's out there and they can also download the weather specifically at Maplewood Golf Course. They also implemented an additional top dressing of greens this year and installed remote access for irrigation system which is an efficient way of monitoring how the irrigation and responding a little more rapidly to weather conditions. And then also introduced new club membership cards. Instead of trying to create a bunch of different coupons, they give them one single card with, as you can see, punch areas on those cards. This year, our total rounds were down a tad, but if you remember, from January through May, I don't think it stopped raining. So we had record rainfall and golfers, you know, call me fickle or whatever, don't like to always golf in the rain. So we were down about 4,500 rounds just through the first five months of the year, which obviously definitely is impactful on business. And our parks planning and natural resources. Some of the projects worked on was Heritage Park drainage repairs. If you've been up there through, ever since the park pretty much was implemented, there were plantings that were in this lower area, this landscaped area, continue because the drainage fell to that side of the property. Now they've cleaned it up, as you can see the picture to your right, where they have established catch basins, they graded it, and then redirected the flows, so, and also used the infiltration. Any questions? I'm kind of going through this because there's a lot of information, please feel free to stop me if you do.
I think you're good.
Another one is the 5.2 acre May Creek acquisition, as you can see highlighted in yellow, and this is our continued quest to do the May Creek Greenway all the way up to Cougar Mountain, and this section here will connect into the East Rail Corridor as well. And this has been 30 years of working with the City of Newcastle, us, and King County. So it's been a very long-range effort and I think Leslie's probably coordinated 47 years of those. I mean, 30 years of those. Just seeing if she's paying attention. So also, we do, the, that division performs several park bridge structural assessments as you can see here, Cedar River Trail, so there's the Trestle Bridge, the bridge over River View and Ron Regis, Springbrook Trail Boardwalk. And so they go through those assessments to make sure that we are maintaining and keeping those bridges safe, and then when we are required to, will necessarily, as necessary, we need to make repairs, and as you can see, there's an estimated repair for the Springbrook Trail at approximately $60,000. And as many of you know, our most popular park, Jean Coulon, has structural assessments that are done every five to six years. And this year, this past year, the, the, under, the steel beams that are underneath our park dock area next to Ivors and it has been cordoned off by fencing for safety reasons, will be addressed. We're looking at that to happen later this year in the fall and then towards the, and then finish up towards the end of the year. All of the permits have been secured at this point, so we'll be coming forward to council with a little bit more detail once the final construction documents are approved. And here again, part of the structural assessment, $2.4 million. The funds for these have, some of the funds have been deferred from other projects, so the Liberty Park Playground Project and the Coulon Paving Project, the funds that were initially budgeted for those have been deferred so that we can take care of these safety And as you know, we are under, there's a aquatics land lease with the Department of Natural Resources, a 30-year agreement. So we're required within that lease to perform certain types of repairs and/or removing either solid docks with light penetrating materials, wave breaks that we need to remove, lots of requirements that are associated with that. So we have here, we have the blue solid lines is the skirting that will be replaced in 2018, the dashed blue is the skirting that will be permanently removed. And then green solid is wood decking converted to light penetrating deck. And then the solid yellow, prior to 2028, has to be converted to light penetrating material as well. So phasing it through and having to work through that process with the DNR just is an added bonus for the time that staff needs to spend. Very exciting that the Sunset Neighborhood Park is under construction. Phase one is almost complete, it'll be about March, I believe, is when we're looking at that completion. We're also, I'm sorry, the substantial completion, we're slated to do a grand opening June 16th, which will be a, we'll send the save the date out to council. A combined celebration with KCLS for the Highlands Neighborhood Library along with the Sunset Park. So at that time, phase one will be in, in the state where the turf and everything will have grown in enough that we can get out on to that surface, so we delayed it until June. We're fortunate enough that the capital budget from the legislators were, was approved, so instead of having to do a additional two phases to this project, the final two phases will be completed at one time, which will be essentially a cost savings and less disruption to the public and to the library and the park. In addition, we have multiple habitat monitoring locations with our projects that were required because of environmental criteria, so as you can see, those are some of the areas that we have here. These are all, I believe, three to five-year monitorings depending on the site. And then part of this division is also hosts or holds the urban forestry program. As you can see, we have the ninth Tree City USA certification coming in and the seventh Growth Award, along with Arbor Day, Earth Day. This past year at Heritage Park, we're looking at April 28th at Tasty Park for this year's Arbor Day, Earth Day, but again, a formal announcement and save the date will be coming out shortly. As you can see here, a very small team, one urban forestry and natural resources manager and a contracted employee take care, and then also some on-call contract tree services take care of citywide tree issues. As you can see, just a sampling of what that looks like. Also, we do partnering, so we have, last year, last, the last three years partnered with Forterra and King Conservation District to remove knotweed along the Cedar River from Ron Regis downstream to the library, and now we'll be getting into another agreement with them to move from the library downstream to the mouth of the river. So we're excited to be able to get that knotweed, obviously very invasive plant, we'd like to eradicate that as best we can in that partnership. And then you can see all of the other, the tree inspections, all the backlogs of emergency things that we take care of, which we are, as you can see, we're still at, what does it look like, 2,100 or on all priorities, different levels of priorities of backlog, so just tons of tree issues to take care of. And then we also coordinate, because we're a citywide resource with the planners, inspectors, code compliance, et cetera, so we assist with all of the tree inspections and issues that go along with that. So we have human services. Again, a small but mighty team, working with interdepartmental committees, they did, they piloted the DocuSign Program which is an electronic contract signature software. So they did that through, for 2017 and 18, all the contracts that the city gives grants to through the human services process, funding process. And then also, they, through Funders Alliance, monitor over 24 programs. 18 have been completed and we're still, the six remaining that will be completed in 2018. And then we also participate, they do a multi-city work group on results-based accountability, so we're looking at early childhood development and the outcomes of the issues that are, are coming upon them as they either reach homelessness or low-income housing and those kind of So we have the funding process for 2018, 19, we'll be moving forward here with our Human Services Advisory Committee along with our team. $586,000 will go to approximately 51 nonprofit human service agencies. And then we're looking at approximately $129,000 directed just to homelessness prevention and homeless programs. And then some of our partners, Catholic Community Services, which provides staffing when we have to implement the cold weather shelter. Reach, as you know, the Center of Hope here in City Hall, as well as the feeding program at 300 Rainier Building, Rotary, the Sobering Center, we've part Habitat for Humanity. All of these extend our resources and capacity on what we can provide to our vulnerable Another aspect of human services, the Housing and Repair Assistance Program, again, serving qualified low-income residents, so they have to meet the criteria which are homeowners under a certain income. And then, we've been able to, through council approval, increase that the highest amount that any one homeowner could receive is $4,000 in repair, because we're looking at the safe and healthy housing so that we can repair mold issues potentially, railings that go into houses so that it helps the seniors and/or ADA issues. So the council approved an additional $2,000 for the maximum, so we're at $6,000 per, per site if they were, if they were needing to use that. And that doesn't mean that those that come in get $6,000 immediately, it's addressed to exactly what their issues are and then we take care of it from, from that point. And then again, some of the, part of the safe and healthy homes, that's what we were talking about, as you can see, with Habitat for Humanity partnering to put in railing and ramp for this resident. We also have the History Museum under our department, and again, they do an amazing job and the variety of programming and exhibits that they have brought in over the past 10 years has just been incredible. Some of the accomplishments from 2017 was the Sorting Out Race exhibit. It was the only showing in the Pacific Northwest. Not only was it high attendance, it had a positive media coverage, and it also advanced the city's inclusion goals. And then we also organized an exhibit called Renton High Indians which hosted 250 Renton High School students that toured, that, we had a tour and discussion on Native American mascots, so we're really involved a lot with our Renton School District. And then we also had curriculum for third and fourth graders on the Coast Salish Native Americans, and then how that was supported through the school district. And then consulted, Liz Stewart is on the Renton Historic Preservation Program, she's a representative, so the King County Landmarks Commission where they review buildings that would potentially go into that category, and so she's represented for the city on, on that board. And then again, the upcoming exhibits we have, you can see that we have one from January to, to June, which is, these are new that I'm just seeing now, too, the Black and White it's called, and then Renton Knights is the next one that will be coming forward in the, in the Great War on the home front and on the battle front, and then working through Historical Society and the city with Liz, they're also redoing their strategic plan as well. Then moving on to our Facilities Division. Facilities, just in a perspective, we have two different groups, maintenance groups and custodial groups, which maintain 66 buildings throughout and other spaces throughout our city, other spaces meaning like shelters potentially, our picnic shelters, so they're, anything that has to do with the roof and underlayment, they'll take care of those kind of things as well, which totals, as you can see, over 790,000 square feet of facilities. This team of 23, essentially 23 custodians, full and part-time, and seven techs, we're averaging a little over 23,000 square feet per employee, and it's what they take care of in the space and time that they have is, is pretty amazing. The other side of the house on, on the Facilities Division is our capital projects. So as council is aware, through the Sunset redevelopment facilities, the Community Services Department partnered with Renton Housing Authority and removed the remaining seven fourplex houses that were up in the area that surrounded what is now the Sunset Neighborhood We've completed, they have completed several projects at the Renton Senior Center where the upgrades will be, I believe, just sent through the, is it, where's MJ, February 19th?
Oh, 9/38.
February 19th, we just sent through as a tour of the facility so we could see, show council and the partners that helped out with this, all the upgrades that happened in the senior center. So initially, it started out as the ADA upgrades for the front counter and office, which was a CDBG grant through King County, 250,000 to do that. And then we also did the banquet room remodel, if you will, there's new lights, LED, efficient lighting that's in there. We installed AV system, so in-ceiling AV as well as a drop-down, a electronic-powered screen that comes down. The lights are taken, the old lights were taken up out of the way, so now they don't interfere with some of the programming that's in the facility. It's amazing, it looks really good in there. And then also, new glass walls are called genius walls. If you haven't been in there, it looks really nice, it's really freshened up, the lobby in there, new seating in that area as well as display screen so we can continually display the programs that are coming through the facility. And then as you can see here in this photo, the, some of the kitchen equipment that has been replaced from dishwasher to ovens, the flat-top, the microwave, steamer, it looks, it looks really good. Here's a photo of the, on the left, obviously banquet room lighting, and then the office lobby, the remodel. Part of the right-hand side, the waiting area lobby. And then the left, where you can see the glass walls there, that's the genius walls with the nice art that's on that. And then another project that Facilities took care of earlier this year was the Permit Center on the sixth floor for CED. This project was a little over $395,000 to complete. They did a fantastic job and I'm sure you've seen that, but it's very customer-friendly, very worker-friendly, and provided a lot of good workspaces and waiting areas for the Not that we don't have any big projects on our list, but we are getting ready to start construction of Canyondale Fire Station 15, which is shown in the conceptual there on the left-hand side. That bid has been accepted and will be coming forward to council on February 12th. And then City Hall Elevator Modernization is, it's a mouthful, we could've just said elevator replacement, but we have to officially call it modernization. That is currently out in the, to the potential bidders with some of the requirements because of the different types of things that have to happen in the elevator shaft. Now it have to be upgraded to code. We're not allowed to have any conduit and wirings and things that aren't directly related to elevators in there, so there's quite a bit that, differences that need to happen in there.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Any anticipated time you're gonna start on the elevators? I mean, it's, it seems to me that we must have approved this about a year or so ago, and every time you come in, you see the signs that say, expect slow service. So I, I kind of see a priority to get this done.
Absolutely, and it is our highest priority. We actually tried to go through to get the emergency classification on this and it didn't, didn't meet that requirement, so we're pushing this as hard as we can through. So it's been a little, little less than a year, just right about a year, that we've already got our architects working on all, you know, obviously all the bid documents, all of the, the requirements, the contract, contract requirements that go into that, all the engineering and design that goes along with that. So all that's being done ahead of time, so once we get the bid out which, or back in, which should be the mid-portion of this month, then they can start, whoever the contractor is that we select can then order up the parts, because this is gonna be, all elevators that are refabbed like these would be, would have to be designed and fabricated separately. So they'll be able to order all of the, the equipment, all of the wiring, all of the fixtures that would need to happen through that. So we're, we're staying as, as much on top of that as we can, as quickly as we can.
I think one of the things that just is frustrating for us is that it's, you know, the blessing of being in pure sound areas, it's a hot economy. The curse is when you're trying to find elevator companies who can fit this project into their backlog, it may be some, some while before we actually get them on-site. As Kelly said, we're trying to see if we can get as much stuff done now so that by the time they actually need to be here, the fabrication's already done, but this is gonna take longer than any of us wish it would.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to the Recreation Team. Next, we're going to move on to the Recreation Team. A few new faces there. Recreation provides, these publications, seven times a year, throughout the year, produces about a little over 59,000 of these printed copies that get out through our communities, in our facilities, out to the school district, all over the. It is one of the most popular publications that we provide. Citizens are always asking when the next one's coming out. It shows them when we have all of our programs, all the new things that are happening, all the new events that are coming forward. So very, very popular. One thing that the team is looking at, so the more we try to do intergenerational programming involving both youth and the seniors, that we may be looking at combining these two publications so that it gives perspective for, on both sides. So we can at least bring some groups together potentially. But we're still evaluating that for efficiencies as well. So here is a representation of just registered program participants. These, this doesn't include drop-ins or special event things, but you can see that 30%, again, back to what our fields and our courts support, is 30% of the registered programs go into our sports. Out of all of the registered participants, just at the RCC, those programs brought in over $415,000 just for programs at the RCC. We also provide enrichment programs, which would be like arts, crafts, music, dance, those kind of things, and then also the fitness classes as well. And as council knows, the fitness rooms and fitness in general are, it's a highly competitive business. So depending on where other, like LA Fitnesses and all of those other bigger entities, the closer they are to what we provide, we're looking at, you know, what is it we can do that's a little bit different to attract different people? We're not providing the same types of things that these entities do or some of them that are just so popular that we will get the overflow of that as well. So the team's continually evaluating what we provide there. Sample of some of our enrichment programs. The top-left one is something that the team is really proud of. It's called Softball, let me get this right, Chair Softball League at the Senior Center. And if you've ever played cornhole or have seen how the people toss beanbags and stuff, it's pretty competitive. And these folks, they'll play this softball game in their chair. Again, we have lots of teams that participate, so it's pretty fun. If you ever like to try, let us know and we'll make sure we get you into the Senior Center. So we looked at, we also look at, in a demographic way of how, who and how, excuse me, who and age of people that are registering for our programs. So right now, you can see that youth, teen are the bigger portion of it. And I would like to say that youth, meaning a little bit younger than 14, not, between 14 and 18, and we're still trying to work on programming that will attract them a little bit better. This doesn't include any of our drop-ins as well. This is just for registered programs. And that, right now, we're looking at approximately 70% of our participants are all under the age of 50. Some of the programming that we provide in our parks, we had, we did nine outdoor movies this year. 4,000 people in our local parks and neighborhoods. And as you can see in the background of that movie, that was when we had all of the fires. So it was definitely a little bit hazy in the background. But it's, you can see in the foreground a little bit, they're very well-attended and extremely popular. Also, the, when I went back to the sports use for the fields, 318 youth and adult sports teams, that's not participants, those are total teams. So we're looking at approximately 56,000 visits through our facilities. Again, extremely popular. The other, obviously, very popular thing in the summertime and the, hopefully, three months that we get warm weather, that we can open up our pool and our beaches. Henry Moses Aquatic Center, super popular. You can see the number of visitors we have there. We hired, amongst that 149 part-time staff there, 103 of those were lifeguards. So again, for both of our beaches, Kulan and Kennydale Beach, as well as H Mac, 103 of that part-time staff are lifeguards. And it would be good to note that at, because all of our lifeguards are certified and are trained, we had 57 saves at Henry Moses Aquatic Center, nine saves at Kennydale Beach, and 23 saves at Kulan. And saves are if there's somebody that maybe had a, you know, cramp in their leg as they're walking out, we want to make sure that we're getting them up to potential, somebody potentially drowning. So staff is on it all the time and they do a fantastic job. Rentals, again, we have recreation facilities and picnic shelter bookings that Recreation Team is also responsible for and you can see the numbers there. And then we also estimated the daily average of foot traffic through our community center and senior center. We do have door trackers, so as people come in and out, we have to average that because we don't want to track both in and out and duplicate. So we are trying to be as accurate as we can. But again, peaks and valleys depending on time of year and program. So the 8400, or excuse me, 847 daily average at RCC would be probably at a peak time in the summertime. We have a lot of programs, a little bit longer operating hours and those kind of things. The other thing, this will be our second Senior Expo, which we will also be sending out formal invitations to. But we'll be hosting April 7th at the Senior Center. We did one a year and a half ago and very successful. And Senior Center team, along with our Senior Advisory Committee, are working on the programs and hearing what our public and the rest of the people that populate the Senior Center, what they want to have provided at these expos. So we do things like health fairs, healthy housing-type things, different types of activities, travel, anything that they're interested in, we make sure that we provide. These are some of the...
Go ahead, Ruth.
Sorry. Do you have numbers that will tell us the attendance of the last Senior Expo?
If I remember correctly, it was over 900. But I can confirm that I was, we were there during that one and I believe it was a little bit over 900.
Thank you.
Which is pretty huge for a four-hour period.
Thank you.
But I'll confirm it. Then we also, the Recreation Team also provides their own, I shouldn't say their own, but the events that they coordinate. So as you can see here, we have the Candy Cane Fun Run, Barbecue the Badges, which we partner with the police and that's been very successful, Truck or Treating, the Pooch Plunge. We had to add additional time for there because that is like extremely popular. It's the end of the season, obviously, when we're getting ready to close our pool. So we, it's just, I can't remember how many total people went through this year. I can find out for you, but it's, again, one of our more popular ones. And then we also do the Polar Bear Plunge along with our Hassle Free Bazaar, which is extremely popular as well. One of the other things, too, before I move on to Neighborhood Resources Events, all of our teams support things like the Renton River Days, the Fourth of July, our, what was the one we did, the first one we did this year? Multi, or the second one, we did Multicultural Festival, Screen on the Greens. All of our teams are always there, Cruise the Loop, there to support with Recreation being definitely there in high force. We have our Neighborhood Resources and Events Division. Again, as you know, that team's been moved out when we did the reorganization. So this is what happened this past year and now we'll be moving forward with their new teams. So we did, we have 92 designated neighborhood associations now. We added nine this year. As you can see, we had several grants through our, through the organized association. We had a lot of special event grants. So we did three separate neighborhood events where we did a movie up in the Maplewood Heights area. We did the downtown between North Renton and South Renton neighborhoods. We did the Downtown Celebration. And then we also did, I'm trying to remember the other one. Oh, Bark in the Park was the other, was a brand-new one as well. So Bark in the Park was extremely successful. We partnered with Renton Community Foundation and an idea that came from Marlene Winter, one of our park board members, to utilize some of that funding out of the Renton Community Foundation to provide free chipping. We partnered with Eastside Veterinary. So as long as the specified funds last, Renton citizens can get their dog or cat chipped so that when, if they are lost, when the animal control finds them, they're able to reunite them with their, with their home. So that's, that's a pretty special thing.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we know how many cities offer this free chipping in the state of Washington?
I do not, but I can find out. I think we may be one of the only ones that have gone through. And the police actually coordinated getting chips, too. So we're able to provide those chips to the Eastside Veterinary, which cuts the cost down as well.
Thank you.
Again, we funded 78 different neighborhood grants. You can see a total of over 108,000, the different breakdowns of those grants. And then one of the examples is a before and after of the Aspenwood neighborhood, the playground replacement project. So the before picture, the playground was starting to become unsafe. And the neighborhood, through partial funding and through sponsorship as well, were able to replace it with a brand-new playground. We also had two neighborhoods that received awards through the National, excuse me, Neighborhoods USA National Recognition. Kennydale Neighborhood won for, or took second place for their newsletter in La Crosse. The Beehive Project also took second place. So pretty cool that our neighbors are being recognized nationally. And then we move on to Farmer's Market. And we can't believe that it's the 16th season. It's completely amazing that group does, along with the Piazza Volunteers, does an amazing job. As you can see, the season sponsors this year and also grant funding, the success of this program just continues to get more popular. And then just some of the numbers, the number of market days. As you can see, one less market day, just how it falls through the calendar, but 6,000 more visitors in one less market day. So it's, again, it shows the popularity. The EBT programs, the SNAP program, the Fresh Bucks, also encouraging a lot of our citizens to come in. Summer Lunch Program, partners with Renton School District, as well as we receive a United Way Grant for the volunteers that work with us. The AmeriCorps, we had seven AmeriCorps members and they provided the recreational activities at the sites. Also had Art-to-Go kits for the kids and just were a huge support. We couldn't do it without the volunteers, with, obviously, without the school district. And then KCLS through a couple of our events as well. So at nine of the events, as you can see, KCLS were cosponsors. The Summer Lunch Extravaganza, KCLS actually handed out 300 free books at Heritage and Liberty Parks as well, and just really popular events. We also oversee the Scholarship or Gift of Play Program. So donations that come in go to low-income or underprivileged kids and/or seniors to qualify for this. And you can see the number of individuals and the amounts of awards that are given out. Fantastic program so that kids and adults, specialized rec adults as well, can participate in some of our programs that they wouldn't normally be able to do. And then also, again, the Small Mighty Division in the NRE Group Volunteer Program that the opportunities that we had, obviously, increased through our volunteer. The top graphic there is just through Community Service Department volunteers, which includes like park projects, a farmer's market, special events, youth athletics. And then below that is citywide department volunteers. So like Kiwanis, Renton Rotary, Renton Sailing Club, those type of agencies and entities that come and volunteer at like our Days of Service, our Arbor Days, our Green and Cleans, those kind of things we track as well. Event permitting, special event permitting does go through our department and then we coordinate interdepartmentally with other departments. So you can see almost double the number of special event requests. Those would be things like the use of the trail for a walk event. They would be things like the CEOC 12K Fun Runs, the Training Camp, Return to Renton Car Show, Cast for Kids, those kind of things that potentially would affect whether we needed to maybe close streets or fire would have to come in and look to make sure if there's any issues that hit the fire code, that we make sure that they're, they, the entity, are taking care of what they need to take care of. On the Community Services side, we'll look at the use and impact on parks and maybe suggest different days on less high-peak times. So that committee reviews all of these and then approves or recommends other times or other agencies. So the annual city-sponsored events, as we mentioned before, the Fourth of July, which we had, again, over 25,000 attendees. It's, I know that you've all seen it, it's a huge citywide event that the families absolutely love at Gene Kulan Park. We did the 32nd Annual Renton River Days, again, with an estimated over 30,000 attendees over the three-day festival. And you can see the number of volunteer hours and charitable donations through that. And we also did a brand-new event. Apologize for that, looks like the new got condensed down a bit. But we had a Cruise the Loop event. As you can see, 120 cars registered, over 500 attendees. It was a, for a first-time event, it was pretty amazing, very popular. And we'll be moving forward with it again this year. You can see it's Saturday, August 18th again. We did a second annual with Communications and the Multicultural Task Force, partnered the Second Annual Multicultural Festival, over two days, hosted in Carco with performances and then also different performances at Piazza Park and in the Pavilion as well. And this year, coming up, is September 21st and September 22nd. More information will be coming as we get closer to that date. We'll be doing another Bark in the Park, again, I believe, which we will forward on information to you. We'll coordinate that through our neighborhood program. We did the 24th Ivors Clam Lights and that's in sponsorship and partnership. Obviously Ivors down at Kulan, and again, another extremely successful event. Sponsorships and grants through all of our, either through LTAC funding or private sponsorship from businesses or grants. You can see how a lot of those support the events along with city staff and time, all city staff and time interdepartmentally. And then, again, on top of the other projects and activities and action plans and everything that we take care of, Community Services oversees these boards and commissions along with, like it states there, numerous regional committees, different state boards, internal review committees as well. But we do oversee these volunteer committees citywide. And I can't say enough about how much time our staff spends, not only during their normal workday, but most of these commissions are after work as well. So definitely, as I mentioned before, police, huge partner with Community Services along with other interdepartmental teams who are special events, CED, everybody. We couldn't do a lot of what we do without the collaborative efforts of the city department. So I want to make sure that we give them the thanks that are due. And then finally, if I could, as it says up there, it does take a village. I'm extremely proud of this team. It's a large team and a very diverse team. We cover a lot of different areas, a lot of different types of activities and events and plans and projects. It's probably the most varied department in the city and, as you can see, again, fairly large. But I would definitely give the credit to our team back here. They're the ones that do the hard work, all of our part-time, full-time, on-the, boots-on-the-ground staff. Again, holidays, weekends, after-hours, they are so committed and they deserve all that credit. So again, thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Any questions from council?
Actually, I do have one quick question.
Go ahead.
I didn't hear anything about the Rowing Center. How is, how is the Rowing Center going?
The Rowing Center's doing well. We actually have the grant that was, well, granted from King County, we have extended it to next year. We're still waiting on permits from Army Corps, we've got the rest of the permits in hand. So, we're working with the Rowing Center. Our team is making sure that the design and construction of that will be a long-lasting dock and entryway out for the Rowing Center. We're also working on some programs through our Recreation Center and promoting them through the Recreation Center, so they get a little bit more exposure as well.
But they've been good tenants and they're doing well, then, yeah?
They are, but again, back to the exposure, we'd like to get more promotion for them, and so we'll be working with them. I think we're meeting in the next week and a half to sit down with their group and in our Recreation and Facilities Teams to get a little bit more exposure to them as well.
Thank you. Great job, Kelly. If there are no further questions, we urge you, we'll be back in seven minutes for council.
Thank you.